On the table, locate the appearance form for your address. Opponents, sign on the bottom. Applicants and their representatives, sign on the top. We need your full name, address, and zip code. There are extra agendas on the table as well. For those coming in, hi. There are appearance forms on the table. Locate the address of the property you're here for. Sign in as the applicant on the top and their representatives, or sign on the bottom if you're in opposition. And there are agendas on the table. Good morning, everybody again. Appearance table on the form, on the table are appearance forms. You locate the one that is related to your address. Applicants and their representatives, sign on top. Opponents, sign on the bottom. And if you would just return them to the table, I put some pens out and if you would return those as well. We need those appearance forms so that I know where to send the resolutions. Again, good morning. Okay, you already know, appearance forms are on the table. Right there, oh, you don't see your address? What is the address? Maybe somebody's signing in on it, aren't they? Does anyone have the appearance form for normal? N O R M A, there we go. After you're done with the forms, if you could return them to the table, as well as the pens. I'll stand over here so I'm out of the way. You're signing appearance forms. So you put your name and address and zip code. And you sign in at the top if you're the applicant or the representative. You sign in at the bottom if you're in opposition. Welcome, come on in. And after you sign the appearance forms, just have a seat. We will be starting shortly. Just sign the appearance forms, yes. Are you the applicant? They are, okay. Then what you do is put it right back on the table. Thank you. Just return the appearance forms right back to the table. Good morning, welcome. There are appearance forms on the table. You find the appearance form that corresponds to your address that you're here for. And then you sign the top if you're the applicant or the rep. Sign the bottom if you're in opposition. And there should be pens on the table. And then just return the appearance forms to the table so that the others can sign in. Afterwards, you can have a seat anywhere in the gallery, back here. Now, the cases should be moving quickly, so check the agenda to see where your case is. When you start getting closer to your case, you can start moving forward in the seats. No, you can, yeah. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for returning the forms. Also, be very careful walking in the council chambers. The floors are on an incline. Or decline. And just return it, yeah. It's all right. I just need it like it, you can, and then, yeah, I'll know. Again, be sure to pick the right appearance form. I believe some people have been signing the wrong forms. A reminder, no food, no drink. Allowed? One more time, thank you. If you would sign the appearance form for your case. The addresses are at the top. Again, if you have any appearance forms, if you can return them to the table for those who still have to sign in. Thank you. Just drop. Yes, sir. Um, that would be more for the. You're going to speak on your case. Then you start moving up toward the front. They'll call the case and then you know to come. Last call for the agendas, or the appearance forms to come back, if you have it. Sir, can I help you? Sure. Would you like to sign in on the appearance form? What you do is you locate the address of your case, okay? And then if you're here in opposition, you sign the bottom if you're here as the applicant, then you sign on the top. And there's some pens here.
All right, good morning, everyone. Welcome to the June 16, 2023, in-person meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Brian Sanchez. My pronouns are he/him/his, and I am the chairman of the ZBA. I'd like to call this meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals to order. I will take a roll call vote to establish quorum. Commissioner Brooks.
Present.
Commissioner Esposito.
Present.
Commissioner Toya. I am present, quorum is established. The minutes of May's meeting have been distributed. Unless there are corrections, I move that we approve the minutes as distributed. Commissioner Toya, seconds. Commissioner Brooks. Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya. The minute, I vote yes, the minutes are approved. I move that we approve today's agenda. Commissioner Toya, seconds. Commissioner Brooks. Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
I vote yes, the agenda is approved. Now, I would like to take continuances and withdrawals. Anyone with a continuance or withdrawal, please step forward.
Morning, Counselor.
Good morning, Chairman Nick Fatikas, for the record. On the top of page nine, continued cases 1323 S and 1423 Z.
Oh, okay.
That's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other continuances or withdrawals? For the morning session. All right, seeing none, let's call our first case. Calendar number 167-22-S. This is 3440 North Broadway. Morning, Counselor.
Morning. Sure. How's that matter? Okay, good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Tilar Berberian from Thompson-Coburn with offices at 55 East Monroe in Chicago. I'm here with Jean Coronada, who is a principal of the applicant entity 3440 Broadway LLC. This extension request is because we were here about a year ago today. And unfortunately, given the market circumstances and COVID circumstances, the hospitality industry, it's been difficult to secure financing, but we are confident that in the coming year, we'll be able to resolve those issues. So we are here respectfully asking for a one-year continuance on that matter.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Seeing none, we will take this under advisement, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, did, is there, is there a continuance request with regard to the morning?
Yes, it is, Chairman.
Which calendar number?
This would be 180 for the record, Louis W. Powell III, attorney. 180-23-S, at the bottom of page four. Again, that's 180-23-S. War would be all, war would be 21.
And you're requesting a continuance?
Yes, I am. On the basis of, Mr. Chairman, for the record, the city has required that the architects make some changes to the plan. An architect would not be able to complete the changes prior to next week. So on that basis, we'll be asking for a continuance.
Okay. This matter will be continued to August 18, 2023, and no further notice will be given. Again, this is calendar number 180-23-S, will be continued to August 18, 2023. No further notice will be given.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, board.
Thank you. Any other requests for continuances for the morning session? Okay. The first case we're calling is, is going to be out of order on the agenda. These are calling calendar numbers 188-23-S, 189-23-Z, and 190-23-Z. This is 5700 to 5702 South Woodlawn. I'm going to read the Department of Planning and Development's recommendation for calendar number 188-23-S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to expand an existing three-story religious assembly use with a rear one- and two-story addition and total of 70 seats within the prayer room, provided the special use is issued solely to the applicant. Jibad of Hyde Park and the development is consistent with the design and layout of the project data, proposed landscape plan, ground floor plan, and north and south exterior elevations dated June 6, 2023, proposed site plan dated May 31, 2023, code matrix/ zoning diagram, basement floor plan, second floor plan, and east and west exterior elevations dated October 25, 2023, prepared by Vladimir Redutny Architects. Will everyone planning to testify in this matter, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor, you have no objectors, and you can proceed with the short form. Get them to, you can tell us in about a minute or less what this application is about, and then we're going to go right to swearing them to their affidavits, okay?
Okay. Are you going to put the big clock on?
No, but I'm keeping a mental clock, okay?
I'm excited you said that because I just said I didn't prepare a script or anything. I was going to wing it today, so this would be a good test for me, Commissioner, or Chairman, thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and esteemed commissioners. For the record, my name is Sarah Barnes, and I'm an attorney with the law offices of Sam Banks, located right here in the city of Chicago. I'm happy to be here today on behalf of the HABAT of Hyde Park. Here with me today, seated immediately to my right, is the, one of the founders of the HABAT Center, Rabbi Joseph Brackman, AKA Yoshi, and as well, our project architect Vladimir Redutny, and our esteemed MAI-certified appraiser Terry O'Brien. In my one-minute synopsis, we are here today seeking a special use in certain variations, which, if approved, will allow for the physical and functional expansion of the existing HABAT Center that serves the University of Chicago in Hyde Park. The expansion was motivated, in large part, in order to continue to serve the students of the University of Chicago, in particular, in light of the amazing expansion of the graduate program at the University of Chicago. Because this is in a historical district, we were limited in the way that we could physically alter the building. So we couldn't go vertical with the addition, and we had to go backwards, lateral to the rear of the property, which kind of triggers those variations, along with the parking. And therein lies our hardship around which we had to work as well. And then the special use will allow for the additional services of a community center to operate in conjunction with the religious assembly use.
Thank you for that.
Yes.
First witness.
Of course. Rabbi Brackman, if you may please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Joseph Brackman, at 5700 South Woodlawn, Chicago, Illinois 60637.
And as I told you, the hope was for this to be a little bit anticlimactic, so you're not going to get to talk a lot. But we went over everything, and there are a lot of facts in your affidavit, as well as the findings of fact that were submitted prior to this hearing. If you were to continue to testify here today, would your testimony be consistent with the statements that were made in those documents?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, next witness.
Thank you, Mr. Redutny. Will you please state your name and address for the record?
My name is Vladimir Redutny, and my address is 910 North Lake Shore Drive, Chicago, Illinois 60611.
Thank you, Mr. Redutny. And you were retained by the applicant to come up with the programming for the proposed addition to the existing HABAT Center. Is that correct?
Yes.
And prior to this hearing, you two were provided with an affidavit that stated some of the hardships and conditions around which you had to work in order to develop a program for this proposal. Is that correct?
Yes.
And at the, in that affidavit, you confirmed your belief that the proposed variations, as designed, met all of the standards and criteria for a variation as set forth in the current zoning ordinance. Do you still believe that to be true?
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you. And if you were to continue to testify here today, would your testimony be consistent with the statements that were made in the supporting documents?
Yes.
Thank you. Last.
Thank you.
But not least, Mr. O'Brien, may you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, Terrence O'Brien, O-P-A-S-F-Y-B-R-I-E-N. Maintain offices at 145 Revere Drive, Northbrook, Illinois. Professional REA State Appraiser Consultant.
Mr. O'Brien, you were retained by the applicant in order to evaluate the subject proposal and the surrounding area, and to confirm that the proposed special use and the corresponding variations conform to all of the standards and requirements for that type of relief as set forth under the current zoning ordinance. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And did you have an opportunity to make those evaluations?
Yes, I inspected the property on several occasions in January, then again, just several days ago. And I'm familiar with the area in question. I have friends who reside right down the street from this. I inspected the property and the land uses in the subject area. And based upon my inspection of the property, review of the conditions within the subject property, and so forth, and the zoning, it's my opinion that the proposed special use and variations meet all the criteria set forth in the zoning ordinance.
Thank you so much, Mr. O'Brien. And did you also memorialize those opinions and evaluations in the next, in a report that you prepared?
Yes, I addressed the criteria for special use, as well as the variation within my report.
And that report has been tendered to the board prior to this hearing. If you were to continue to testify here today, Mr. O'Brien, would your testimony be consistent with the statements and opinions that were made in your expert report?
Yes, ma'am, they would.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the board? Seeing none, we will take this matter under advisement, thank you.
Thank you. And we would like to extend our gratitude to the board for entertaining us early so that the rabbi can, can go be with his daughter for her wedding.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Next case, 162-23-Z, 4644 North Central.
Hey, good morning.
Good morning, board.
Could you state your name and address, please?
My name is Halina Settlemeyer, and the address of the property I'm looking for, food license is 4644 North Central Avenue in Chicago.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you. What brings you here today?
Okay, I'm looking to expand my business. I've been in a, in my place for 37 years. We opened in 1986, and we're still going, till today. I, I'm looking to expand base of my customers, improve their place and the area, and.
It's a tavern, correct?
Excuse me?
It's a tavern?
Yes, it is. But I'm looking for a food license. I have experience with the food industry. I have another place, a restaurant and a bar for 12 years. So I think I'm a good candidate to run that type of a business.
Would I be, would I be correct that the hardship, why, the reason why you need this food license is so that you can compete with neighboring businesses that not only serve drinks, but also serve food?
That's one. Plus, I think in today's society, we need to have food only. There used to be, 20 years ago, that's all it was, it was a tavern. Now, in order to bring customer in, you have, you should have food. It's make the customer more mild, more friendly. And drinking is not the only option. Plus, we have so many drinks, which are almost not a drink, but at least allows you to socialize with other people, and you're not outcast when you're drinking, let's say, twisted iced tea instead of beer. And you're still in a circle.
Any questions from the board? I think we have what we need. We'll take this under advisement, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next case, 163-23-S, 1734 West 18th Street. Nice to see everyone again.
Everyone is getting situated, I'll read the department's recommendation. This is the recommendation for calendar number 163-23-S. Actually, Nancy is supposed to read this one, do we have Nancy? Hey, Victor. No? Okay. Oh, okay. Okay. So this is the recommendation for 163-23-S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the Body Art Service Tattoo Shop. All those planning to testify, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Sir, could you state your name and address, please?
Hi, my name is Louis Salmon. My address is 4539 West 64th Street, Chicago, Illinois 60629.
And what brings you here today?
I'm here to apply for a special use to establish a body art tattoo shop in a B3-2 community shopping district.
Can you just briefly tell us about your experience in the tattoo industry?
I've been tattooing for 10 years. I've been managing a shop for about five years, and I'm looking to start my own.
And how many employees are you intending to have?
I'll be having about six employees, and everyone will be certified to tattoo under all requirements of Illinois law.
And am I correct that the hours you intend on having is 1:00 to 8:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday, and 12:00 to 6:00 on Sunday?
Yes.
Okay. Is that going to be just open door, or by appointment, or?
We're going to accept walk-ins. Most of our clientele is appointment-only, though, but we will be accepting walk-ins.
Okay. Mr. Ryan, could you say?
Good morning, Chairman.
Good morning. Could you state your name and address, please?
Joseph F. Bryan, MAI, President LaSalle Appraisal Group, with offices at 9455 South Wayne Avenue in Chicago.
And am I correct that you prepared a report with regard to this matter?
Yes, I did, Chairman.
And if you were to continue to testify, would you testify consistent with that report?
Yes, I would.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Seeing none, we will take this matter under advisement, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next case, 164-23-Z, 7828 South Popecks.
All right, good morning. Would everyone planning on testifying, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Moore, in a minute or less, if you could describe what this project is about, and then have your witnesses swear to their affidavits, there's no objectors here.
Great. Thank you very much. Welcome back, everybody. It's nice to be here. My name, for the record, is Thomas S. Moore. This is a case where Mr. Sykes, who's a transportation expert at UIC, bought this, what he thought was a four-flat, because he thought if he renovated, and eventually it would be his retirement. The city, unbeknownst to him, he found out later that it's only a three-flat. It has a basement apartment that he wanted. The city, unbeknownst to him, he found out later that it's only a three flat. It has a basement apartment that he wants to live in. So he couldn't get a permit to renovate. But fortunately, it's a big lot and he has ninety-three percent. If you have nor, the ninety percent this board has the, the, and the only things preventing having a fourth unit is the, the ground square feet. You need a thousand. He has nine hundred and something. Then this board has the ability to grant a variance allowing him the fourth unit, and that's why we're here today. Will you tell the board who you are?
My name is Jesse Sykes. I stay seventy-eight twenty-eight South Colfax. I'm with U I C Automotive Performance. And I brought this property. When I bought the property, someone was living in the basement. And I started rehab. I got the permits for the first three floors. When I got ready to do the basement over, I found out that it was illegal.
And let me, let me ask you a question. When you, when you bought the property, it was sold to you as a four unit building. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah. And you prepared an affidavit with regard to this case. Is that true?
Yes, sir.
And if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistent with that affidavit. True?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And next gentleman, will you tell the board who you are?
Brian Hudson, architect for the project.
And so if, if the or she's fit to grant this variance, your plans would bring everything into compliance. Is that right?
It would.
And you and I worked out an affidavit whereby if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with that affidavit, addressing all the criteria necessary for the board to grant this variance. Is that right?
Yes.
That's our case in chief. I think there also is a gentleman here from Alderman Mitchell's office.
Great. Could you state your name and role, please?
Patrick Watson, staff aide to Alderman Mitchell. He couldn't be here, so this is what he has to say. He said, he agreed to support the conversion of the basement into a four dwelling unit based on the following. Owner has taken including, taken steps including obtaining the proper permits, working with inspectors from the building department to legalize the additional unit. Owner represented that subsequent to the renovation and legalization of the fourth dwelling unit that he will live in the property specifically in the basement for the foreseeable future. Alderman has requested a letter from the owner stating that the property will be owner occupied. However, as of this morning, he has not received the letter. He said, I am okay with Mr. Skies stating verifying on the record that this property will be owner occupied in my office receiving a letter shortly thereafter.
And may I point out that under oath, he told you that he does intend to live in the basement.
So, sir, that's correct. You're intending to live in the basement of the property? Okay. And I mean, he's, he's on the record, but will you prepare a letter to that effect for the Alderman?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll be glad to get it to the staff.
Sure. Okay. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, we will take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next case, one sixty-five twenty-three S. Forty-fifty-eight West Lawrence.
I can just read it. I don't need to wait for Nancy. Oh, okay, great.
Hi.
Hi.
Good morning.
All those planning to testify, could you raise your right hand, please? Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you. Jeanette, if you could state your name and role?
Good morning. My name is Jeanette Velasquez, and I am a project coordinator with the Zoning Board of Appeals. I'm here on behalf of the Department of Planning and Development to read the department's recommendation letter into the record. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed hair and nail salon. The department finds that this proposal complies with all the applicable standards of the zoning ordinance, is in the interest of the public convenience, and will not have a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood. The department also finds a hair and nail salon would be compatible with the character of the surrounding area in terms of building scale and design and operating characteristics. Lastly, the proposed hair and nail salon is designed to promote pedestrian safety and comfort.
Okay, thank you very much. Could you state your name and address, please?
Hello, Chairman. Good morning. My name is Nisha Patel, and the address is forty-fifty-eight West Lawrence Avenue.
Okay, thank you. And tell us why you're here today.
I'm planning to open hair and nail salon to, yeah, to get more customers in.
Sure. Could you tell us a little bit about your experience in this business?
I have worked since I was in high school, actually. So I've started enjoying hair and nail a lot more than I went to a college, of course, and then I got introduced by my mother. She's also a professional. She's also done cosmetology licensing and stuff. So, yeah, that's how I've started working with her.
And are you planning to have any employees?
Yeah, right now, currently we have three, me, my mom, and another person. And further on, most likely, yeah, we're gonna add more.
What are the hours that you intend on keeping?
We, from eight to nine.
Is that every day?
Every day. Sunday, we, right now it's closed, but we might change that to eleven to five on Sundays.
Okay, okay. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, we will take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next case, one sixty-six twenty-three Z, thirty-six forty-six, North Magnolia.
Okay, good morning. Would everyone planning on testifying, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Okay, thank you. Counselor, in a minute or less, tell us what this application is about and then
I'll do my best. Good morning, Chairman Fred Augustine. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, David Olivera in Sioux, Birmingham. Applicants own the property at thirty-six forty-six North Magnolia. It's currently improved with a three-story building. The plan is the applicant would like to de-convert the existing three units down to two units. The second and third floor unit will be a duplex which the applicants will reside in, and the first floor unit will be a simplex. What they're proposing to do is build a three-story addition at the rear of the building, which will be an elevator. And so in order to do that, they are here seeking a variation to increase the existing F A R from six thousand, six thousand three square feet to six thousand two hundred and twenty-three square feet. Here with me this morning is the applicant, Sue Birmingham, and our project architect, Lazlo Simovic. Briefly, Chairman, the hardship is we have an existing building that's a hundred and nine years old. It already exceeds the existing F A R that's permitted on the lot. As well as the lots only a hundred and twenty-three feet deep, which is shorter than a standard city lot that's a hundred and twenty-five feet deep. So if I could call my first witness, Ms. Birmingham, please state your name and address for the record.
Sue Birmingham, thirty-six forty-six North Magnolia Avenue.
And you and your husband own the property at thirty-six forty-six North Magnolia. Is that correct?
Yes.
Briefly explain to the board why the elevator is needed.
I had a freak accident in twenty nineteen during the polar vortex. I slipped on ice down our back stairs. I tore my meniscus. I broke my back. I fractured L one, L two, and L three. And I spent eighteen months at Shirley Ryan learning how to walk again.
And you executed an affidavit which I submitted to the board on your behalf?
Yes.
And if we continued your testimony, would be consistent with your affidavit? Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Simovic, please state your name and address for the record.
Lazlo Simovic, sixty-five twelve North Artisan, Chicago, six oh six four five.
You are a licensed architect in the state of Illinois?
Yes.
And you have testified before this board as an expert witness in architecture. Is that correct?
I have.
Applicant is seeking a variation to increase the F A R in order to construct the three-story addition. Is that right?
Correct.
And as I stated before, the existing building already exceeds the permitted F A R allowed under the R T three point five district. Is that right?
Correct.
Hence, the reason we're seeking a variation.
Yes.
You executed an affidavit which I submitted to the board on your behalf?
Yes.
And if we continued, your testimony would be consistent with your affidavit. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no further questions. We're here to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board? We will take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next case, one sixty-seven twenty-three S, fifty-five twenty-eight North Milwaukee.
All right, while you're getting situated, I will read the department's recommendation. This is the recommendation for calendar number one sixty-seven dash twenty-three dash S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed massage establishment provided, one, the special use is issued solely to the applicant Glory Spa Corp. Slash Ink Jargel Sanjasan. Two, the establishment maintains clear, non-reflective windows on the street-facing building facade, which shall not be painted over, darkened, or obstructed in any way so that the reception and waiting area is visible from the street. And three, prior to issuance of business license and certificate of occupancy, the required ornamental fence has been installed around the existing parking lot in accordance with section seventeen dash eleven dash zero two zero two dash C to bring the site into compliance with the landscape ordinance. Would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you, counselor. In a minute, tell us why you're here today.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Peter Lee. I'm an attorney. I'm here on behalf of Glory Spa Corporation, located at fifty-five twenty-eight North Milwaukee Avenue in Chicago. I also have the president of the corporation, Ink Jargel Sanjasan. She's next to me, as well as land use consultant, Mr. Kareem Musawar. Our request is to establish a massage establishment located in a B three dash one community shopping district. I have worked with, we have worked with the, with the staff to complete and comply with all the prescribed requirements and we expect to run a very professional store staffed by licensed therapists from the Illinois Department of Professional Regulations.
Thank you. First witness?
First. First witness.
Get your name and address, please.
Ink Jargel Sanjasan, five five two eight.
Okay.
Okay.
It's good now.
My name is Ink Jargel Sanjasan. I'm from five five two eight North Milwaukee, about Glory Spa Chicago, six oh six three oh.
Thank you. And I, I apologize for mispronouncing your name when I read the recommendation.
It was correct. Thank you.
Did you prepare an affidavit with regard, or did you sign an affidavit with regard to this case?
Yes, I did.
Yes. And if you were to testify, you would testify consistent with that affidavit. True?
Yes.
Let me just ask a couple of questions. What are the hours that you plan on maintaining for this?
No, not nine A M. to eight P M. Every day, nine to eight.
And how many employees do you intend on having?
Two or three. It's depend on business. Yeah.
Sure. Okay. Thank you very much. Kareem, if you could state your name and address, please?
Kareem Musawar, two twenty-one North LaSalle Street, Chicago, Illinois.
You prepared a report in this matter. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And if you were to continue to testify, you would testify consistent with that report. True?
True.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
This is Commissioner Esposito. Can you just briefly describe how long the business was in operation before this application was submitted?
The, at that space, I believe it was, it was an empty space. Well, we, we applied for the application. I don't know what business was there before. She had a business elsewhere, several miles east of there, previous to that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, we will take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I do briefly just need to recall one eighty-eight dash twenty-three dash S, fifty-seven hundred to oh two South Woodlawn. Just for the purpose of reading the department's recommendation, which Counselor Barnes correctly pointed out, I forgot to read. So thank you for that, counselor. All right, this is the department's recommendation for calendar number one eighty-eight dash twenty-three dash S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to expand an existing three-story religious assembly use with a rear one and two-story addition and total of seventy seats within the prayer room, provided the special use is issued solely to the applicant. Chabad of Hyde Park and the development is consistent with the design and layout of the project data, proposed landscape plan, ground floor plan, and north and south exterior elevations dated June sixth, twenty twenty-three. Proposed site plan dated May thirty-one, twenty twenty-three. Code matrix slash zoning diagram, basement floor plan, second floor plan, and east and west exterior elevations dated October, October twenty-five, twenty twenty-three, prepared by Vladimir Redutny Architects. Actually, do think I read that already. Yeah. Yeah, having read it again, I'm pretty sure I read it. Thank you.
Case, one sixty-eight twenty-three Z, twelve fifty-four West Wellington.
Okay, would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
So my name for the record is Thomas S. Moore. Will you tell the board who you are?
Dan Simon. I live at twelve fifty-four West Wellington.
Who do you live there with?
I live there with my wife and my three children.
How long have you lived there?
Since two thousand and five.
And you want to have a, a, a additional dwelling unit over your garage in the back? Why? What do you need that for?
Some more living space. My, my children are getting older. When they come back from college, we want a place for them to, to live. And also, our mothers are getting older and they spend more time with us, so we want some more space for them. And the A D O, A D U program is great for some additional living space.
So if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with the affidavit that you and I worked out, addressing all the criteria necessary for the board to grant this variance. Is that right?
That's correct.
Tell us, sir, who you are.
My name is Kwan Hau Chen. I'm a licensed architect in State of Illinois.
And will you tell the board what the hardship or practical difficulty is, why we need this variance?
With restrictions of the size of this coach house and the garage, we, we had to put the stairs outside in order to meet the requirement to parking spaces inside the garage.
And you can't put the stairs inside because then you wouldn't be able to have the room for the parking?
Correct.
And you and I worked out an affidavit whereby if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with it, and it addressed all the criteria necessary for the board to grant this variance. Is that right?
Correct.
That's our case in chief.
Thank you, counselor. Any questions from the board? We will take this matter under advisement.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next case, one sixty-nine twenty-three S, sixteen twenty-six, West Morse.
All right, I'll go ahead and read the department's recommendation. This is the recommendation for calendar number one sixty-nine dash twenty-three dash S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the Body Art slash Tattoo Establishment. All those planning to testify, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
So my name for the record is Thomas S. Moore. Will you tell the board who you are?
I am Rafael E. Torres, Junior.
And Mr. Torres, you have trained as an apprentice with another body arts person for many years. Is that right?
Yes.
And you're also taking all the health classes and you're licensed as a certified tattoo artist. Is that right?
Yes.
And, but you want to have your own shop, is that right?
Yep.
And so you've got a lease where you could have your own shop if this board grants the special use. Is that right?
Yes.
And what are the hours you're gonna have?
Twelve to six, Wednesday through Sunday.
Okay. And is it mostly by appointment?
Only appointment.
Okay. And will you have others working with you?
One other artist and myself. That'll be it.
Okay. And you and I worked out an affidavit where you addressed all the criteria necessary for this board to grant the special use. And if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with it. Is that right?
Yes.
The gentleman to his right, will you tell us who you are?
Joseph M. Ryan, M A I, President LaSalle Appraisal Group with offices at ninety-four fifty-five South One. Joseph M. Ryan, MAI President, LaSalle Appraisal Group, with offices at ninety-four fifty-five South Hoytton Avenue in Chicago.
And at my request, you did a study, did a report, and are here today to testify to your conclusions about whether or not this would have a negative effect on the surrounding property values, and whether or not it could meet all the criteria necessary for this board to grant a special use, is that right?
That's correct.
And what was your conclusion?
That it would.
And if you were to continue to testify, would you testify consistently with the written report which we have filed?
I would.
That's our case in chief. Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Seeing none, we will take this matter under advisement.
Thank you very much.
Next case, one seventy-two thirty, thirty-two North Chancery.
So, Mr. Chairman, we found out last night that our architect, Mike Ryan, is in the hospital, been in the hospital for a couple of days now. This is a very simple existing condition compliance issue. I think I can prove the case with the applicant, if you'd let us go forward.
Proceed.
Thank you. So tell the board who, my name for the record is Thomas S. Moore. Will you tell the board who you are?
I'm Russell Hughes.
Mr. Hughes, this is a two-unit condo, is that right?
Correct.
And you own the lower one, is that right?
The bottom two floors.
And when did you buy that?
July of last year.
And when you bought it, as far as you knew, everything was in compliance?
Everything was in compliance.
Okay, and this summer you were going to have your daughter's wedding?
Yes.
And so you wanted to put a pergola because your back deck gets very hot when the sun's on it, is that right?
It's west-facing.
And you, so you hired an architect to do the plans for the pergola, and unbeknownst to you, there was a circular stair that is the access to the unit above you. It's the fire access that's necessary, and, but it turns out it's in the side yard and therefore non-compliant, is that right?
That's correct.
And so when you bought the place, you had no idea that was not compliant?
Right.
And no one told you it was not compliant?
That's correct.
And what you want, you're here today is to bring it into compliance?
Yes.
And...
Let me just jump in because I didn't, I didn't swear, man. Sir, could you raise your right hand?
I do.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
And I'm going to correct that everything that you have testified to so far is true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
That is correct. Thank you.
And this staircase, which we've given the board members a picture of, is a see-through staircase, so it's not going to block anyone's slight or error, is that right?
Yes.
And on the other side of it is a parking lot, basically. There's a building on the front, but it's all parking in the back.
Yeah.
So it's, it's not going to have any negative effect on anybody, is that right?
Should not.
Okay, and it, it's been there a long time, and the building is as it is. It all fits into the character of the neighborhood, is that right?
That's correct.
And you and I worked out an affidavit whereby we addressed all the criteria necessary for the board to grant this variance, and if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with it, is that right?
Yes.
And unfortunately, we didn't get here in time, so you had the wedding a couple of weeks ago, is that right?
Yes.
But it was a beautiful day, so it wasn't over.
Wasn't too hot.
Okay, that's our case in chief.
Any questions from the board? We will take this matter under advisement.
Thank you very much.
Case one seventy-one twenty-three, twenty-two thirty North Central Park Avenue.
Morning. Would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you.
My name for the record is Thomas S. Moore. Will you tell the board who you are?
Right up here. Oh, thanks. Gretchen Steele.
Hey, and you're, you're the owner of the property?
Correct, with my husband.
And your husband is here to, to your right?
Correct.
And how long have you and your husband owned the property?
Since two thousand and eight.
Okay, and it's a hundred and thirty-year-old house?
Yes.
And therefore, it has a lot of deferred maintenance and old problems?
Yes, many people have made unspecified improvements to it.
Okay, and so, and you are an artist and you work from home, so all during COVID, you got to see all its problems or kind of live with them, is that right?
Yes.
And so now, you'd like to put an addition on the back, but where the wall is, is in the side yard. It's been there for a hundred and thirty years, and you just want to extend the wall, is that right?
Yes.
And so if the board grants this, it'll make the house much more modern and much more livable, is that right?
Correct.
And you hope to live there for the foreseeable future?
Yes, we do.
So, and you and I worked out an affidavit whereby you addressed all the criteria necessary for the board to grant your variance, and if they do, and if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with that, is that right?
Yes, I would.
Okay, will you tell us who you are? Here, let me speak up with it.
I'm Lilia Kilasius. I'm an architect.
And you designed all of the plans to renovate and add the addition to this house, is that right?
Correct.
And the practical difficulty or hardship is that it's a hundred and thirty-year-old house, and the, the walls were set in the side yard before the zoning rules were made?
That's correct.
And if the board sees grant, sees fit to grant this variance, your plans would bring it fully into compliance, including the addition, is that right?
In, in compliance with the building code?
With the building code?
Yes, correct.
Okay, and you and I worked out an affidavit where you addressed all the criteria necessary for the board to grant this variance, and if they, you continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with your affidavit, is that right?
Yes, it is.
Okay, and will you tell us who you are, sir? There's a mic though. There's a mic.
James Christopher Wade.
And you're the applicant's husband, is that right?
Correct, yes.
And anything you want to add to her testimony?
No, she's been pretty consistent. I mean...
Smart man.
Well, we do have two letters from our immediate neighbors in support of our renovation, if we need that.
Excellent, thank you.
Right, that's our case in chief.
Any questions from the board? Okay, we'll take this matter under advisement.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you. Nick, in, in less than a minute?
Let's do it. All right, thank you, sir. Again, for the record, Nick Fatikas from the offices of Sam Banks. I'm here on behalf of the applicant Superior Club Incorporated, which does business as Beesee Sports Bar and Grill. The applicant leases a thirty-nine-hundred-square-foot tenant space of the subject property located, again, at one twenty oh one through oh-three South Halsted, and currently operates a licensed general restaurant and tavern in that space. Copies of the active licenses were provided with our finding of facts submittal. In order to further promote the business, the applicant is seeking a public place of amusement license, so she can host certain special events, live music and DJs at the establishment. The issue is that our property is located within a hundred and twenty-five feet of an RS-three zoning district. So the applicant is seeking a variation to permit the PPA license, again, specifically within a hundred and twenty-five feet of a residential R-three zoning district. I have two witnesses on behalf of the applicant, Ms. Minette Johnson, and our project architect, Brian Hudson, and chairman, I can do the short form. Minette, if you can.
Please do.
Can you please state your name and address for the record?
Minette Johnson, one twenty oh one South Halsted Street, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six two eight.
And again, you're the president of the applicant Superior Club Incorporated, which does business as Beesee Sports Bar and Grill?
Yes.
And Minette, earlier in this process, we submitted witness statements on your behalf in this case, is that right?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify today, would your testimony be consistent with the statements we provided to the board?
Yes.
And Brian, again, you're a licensed, I'm sorry, Brian, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Twelve twenty-two West Taylor, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six oh seven.
Oh, I'm sorry, you are a licensed architect in the state of Illinois?
I am.
And you also prepared witness statements for this application, is that right?
I did.
And if you were to continue to testify today, would your testimony be consistent with the statements we provide?
It will.
Thank you very much, chairman. That's...
Any questions from the board? Okay, we will take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you.
Chairman, again, for the record, Nick Fatikas from the offices of Sam Banks. I'm here on behalf of the applicant and property owner, Vikas Wadhha. The applicant owns the subject property at eighteen seventy-five North Bissell. The subject property actually measures twenty-four point one-three feet wide by a hundred and twenty-five feet deep, and it's improved with a two-story, two-unit residential building. As you can see from the plans, the residential units are actually located side by side in more of a townhouse setting than the traditional stacked two-flat. The applicant owns the unit at the front of the property along Bissell, and actually, at this point, lacks access to direct usable outdoor space. So the applicant is proposing to construct a partial third-floor addition that would lead to a rooftop deck above his unit. The issue is that the existing building's floor area total is non-conforming, and on top of that, the building was originally constructed along the subject lot's south-side property line. So in order to permit the project, the applicant is seeking a variation to allow the proposed two-hundred-and-twenty-square-foot partial third-floor addition, as well as to reduce the south-side setback. And again, that south-side setback is, is an existing condition which we would be extending straight up. There are, again, two witnesses, again, Vikas Wadhha and our project architect, Daniel Roush. And with that, I will call Vikas. Can you please state your name and address for the record?
Sure, Vikas Wadhwa, eighteen seventy-five North Bissell Street.
And again, you own the subject property at eighteen seventy-five North Bissell?
Yes.
And earlier in this process, we prepared witness statements on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, would your testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
Yes.
Thank you very much. And Dan, can you please state your name and address for the record?
I'm Daniel Roush, architect from Oak Park.
And you again prepared the plans for the proposed partial third-floor addition?
I did.
And in terms of hardship, the issue is that the building already exceeds the floor area total allowed, as well as it was originally constructed favoring the south-side property line, right?
That's correct.
And as I stated earlier, our addition was designed specifically to follow the staircases that already exist in the building, which forces us to then follow the building wall line on the south side of the property.
That is correct.
And it's also, you're understanding that we prepared witness statements on your behalf in this case?
Correct.
And if you were to continue to testify, would the testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
Yes.
Thank you very much, chairman. That concludes the applicant's case in chief. We'd be happy to answer any questions if the board has any.
Any questions from the board? Okay, we will take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Again, Nick Fatikas for the record. I'm here on behalf of the applicants, Michael and Genevieve Dequilla. The applicants own the subject property at eighteen sixty-three West Race Street. The subject lot measures forty-eight feet wide, but only ninety feet deep, and it's actually currently vacant and unimproved. The applicants are proposing to construct a new three-story, single-family home at the site in order to permit the project on the substandard lot depth, on the substandard depth lot. The applicants are seeking variations to reduce the east-side setback, the combined side setback total, the rear setback, relocate rear open space to the roof deck proposed above the attached garage, as well as to increase the allowable building height. There are two witnesses, again, the applicant, Michael Dequilla, and our project architect, Steve Bash. And Michael, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Sure. Michael Dequilla, nineteen thirteen West Race Avenue, Chicago, Illinois.
And again, you and your wife own the subject property at eighteen sixty-three West Race?
We do.
And you're proposing to develop the vacant lot with a new single-family home with an attached garage, is that right?
Correct.
And again, the issues are created, zoning issues are created in this case because of the subject lot's ninety-foot depth dimension?
Yes.
And Michael, is it, you're understanding, again, that we provided the board with written statements ahead of today's hearing?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
It would.
Thank you very much. Steve, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Steve Bash, architect.
And Steve, you prepared the plans for the proposed single-family home and attached garage?
Yes.
And it's your opinion that the unique lot dimensions, and specifically the substandard ninety-foot depth dimension, is the hardship necessitating the relief that we're requesting?
Yes.
And with respect to the east-side setback in particular, the actual three-story portion of the home will still remain setback four feet, ten inches from the side, the east-side property line, correct?
Yes.
So the setback reduction is really needed to permit the footprint of the, the garage at the rear of the property?
Yes.
Otherwise, Steve, it's your understanding that my office filed witness statements on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
Yep.
Thank you very much, chairman. That concludes the applicant's case in chief.
Any questions from the board? We will take this under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you. Am I speaking too fast? I will. I was going to ask. I could tell.
I'm speaking fast, too. It's not, it's not just you. Sure. Okay, would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you, counselor. Please proceed.
Thank you very much, chairman. Nick Fatikas for the record. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, East Douglas Partners LLC. The applicant owns both of the subject properties at thirteen fifty-six and thirteen fifty-eight South Fairfield. Chairman, for the record, these are two separate projects, two separate applications, but identical relief, so we can consolidate the presentation.
Exactly, yes, agreed.
So each, each lot measures twenty-six feet wide by only a hundred and thirteen point five feet deep, and both lots are currently vacant and unimproved. The applicant is proposing to develop the property with a new three-story, three-unit residential building. Each of those buildings will be supported by three parking spaces at the rear of each of the respective lots. In order to permit the project, though, the applicant is seeking variations to reduce the minimum lot area requirement for three units from three thousand square feet to two thousand nine hundred and fifty-one square feet. from three thousand square feet to two thousand nine hundred and fifty-one square feet. And to reiterate that point, the subject lot is just forty-nine square feet short of the technical minimum lottery requirement. Otherwise, the project was designed entirely to comply with the regulations of the RT four zoning district. I have two witnesses available to testify on behalf of the applicant, Mr. David Fleishman, and our project architect, Mr. Peter Sternyak. And with that, David, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, good morning. My name is David M. Fleishman. David M. Fleishman, seventy-seven West Washington Street, Suite eleven fifteen in Chicago.
And David, you're one of the managers of the applicant, East Douglas Partners LLC?
Yes, I am.
And again, that entity owns both of the subject properties at thirteen fifty-six and thirteen fifty-eight South Fairfield. Is that right?
That is correct.
And as I stated, you're planning to develop the prop, each property with a new three-story, three-unit residential building?
Correct.
And David, earlier in this process, we submitted to the board witness statements on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
Yes, it would.
Thank you very much. And Peter, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Peter Sternyak, sixty-six fifty North Northwest Highway Suite two oh five, Chicago, Illinois, six zero six three one.
And Peter, you designed both of the three-story home, or three-story buildings for the properties?
Yes.
And it's your professional opinion that the substandard depth dimension, specifically a hundred and thirteen point five feet, creates the practical difficulties or particular hardships in this case? Is that right?
That's right.
And really, if we were even two feet deeper, still non-conforming, but two feet deeper in terms of lot depth, we wouldn't need any relief for the project that we're proposing.
That's correct.
Peter, it's your understanding that my office filed witness statements on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
That's right.
Chairman, that concludes the applicant's case in chief on both cases. We'd be happy to answer any questions you or the board members have.
Any questions from the board? We will take this matter under advisement.
I appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, would everyone planning to testify? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Paul Shadle. I'm a lawyer with the firm of DLA Piper in Chicago, and I represent the applicant in this matter, the Second Unitarian Church of Chicago. With me today are two witnesses, John Broome, a member of the church's Board of Trustees, who's working on the church's rehabilitation project for the applicant, and John Holbert of Holbert and Associates Architects, the project architect. As noted in the application, in order to rehabilitate both interior and a little bit on the exterior, and improve the accessibility to an existing hundred-and-fifteen-year-old church building, including the extension of an existing east side accessibility ramp and a new north side elevator enclosure, the applicant is requesting the variations to reduce the required rear setback to nineteen point three six feet and the required east side setback from five feet to three point one seven feet. The property, as noted, is improved with a two-story-plus basement masonry church building. The... Yes, I'm sorry, the elevator would, the, the new elevator requires a new elevator shaft that would extend slightly into the rear. The ramp actually shown in the central photo up above, as you can see, there's a small stair and a ramp. That ramp will be extended further just to make it more easy, easier to use. With that, I'm going to turn to the witnesses. Mr. Broome, would you please state your name and address for the record?
John Broome, forty-two fifty North Marine Drive, Chicago.
And you're a member of the board of the applicant, correct?
I am.
Which is the owner of the land and the church building?
Yes.
And the church is used only for congregational and religious assembly purposes, correct?
Yes.
And the purpose of the rehabilitation is both to improve interior space and to improve overall accessibility to all levels of the building. Is that correct?
It is.
And the, as, as your counsel, I submitted an affidavit that you executed of including findings of fact, I'm sorry, to support our findings of fact. Are you aware of that?
I am.
And if you were to testify further today, would your testimony be consistent with the testimony in that affidavit?
It would.
Second witness? Mr. Holbert, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
John Holbert, twenty-one forty-seven North Clermont, Chicago, six oh six four seven.
And you're a principal with Holbert and Associates Architect and the project architect for this renovation project. Is that correct?
Correct.
The building does not now have an elevator that provides access to all levels of the building. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And the ramp on the east side of the building requires extension to provide improved accessibility. Is that correct?
That's correct.
You also submitted an affidavit for this application. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And if you were to testify further today, would your testimony be consistent with that affidavit?
Yes, it would.
That concludes our case in chief.
Thank you, counselor. Any questions from the board? We will take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Appreciate it.
Next case, one eighty-two twenty-three C, forty oh nine North Oakley.
Okay, would everyone planning to testify? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. Counselor, please proceed.
Thank you. Hello again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Talar Berberian with Thompson Coburn, offices at fifty-five East Monroe in Chicago. I'm here today with Patrick Landros, who is the manager of the applicant Irving Oakley LLC, and Chris Michalak, who is our project architect with SGW Architects here in the city. And just I'll describe the relief we're seeking. So we're seeking a variation here to reduce the rear yard for the floors, for the second through fifth floors, from thirty feet to sixteen feet. A brief context for this project, the lot is substandard. It measures one hundred feet by a hundred and fifteen feet. Neither lot depth is, you know, the standard hundred-and-twenty-five-foot depth, and the site, the site was rezoned in October of twenty twenty-one, following a robust community engagement process. We had support from the neighbors as well as the aldermen that resulted in several accommodations and changes being made to the project to address neighborhood concerns, including provision of an upper-level setback on the north side, which reduced our unit count by two units. So we are just here to legalize that rear yard condition. And then I'll just ask our witnesses. Mr. Landros, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Patrick Landros, forty-four thirty-five North Hamilton Avenue, Chicago, Illinois.
And we submitted findings of fact, including an affidavit on your behalf to this board. If you were to continue testifying this morning, would your testimony be consistent with the information in that affidavit?
Yes, it would.
Thank you. And then I'll move on to Chris. Chris, please state your name and address for the record. Oh, it's not on. You want to use Patrick's?
Sure. Hi, Christopher Michalak, project architect, four 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 North Michigan Avenue, six oh six one one in Chicago.
And we also submitted an affidavit together with our findings of fact on your behalf with this application. If you were to continue testifying this morning, would your testimony be consistent with the information in that affidavit?
Yes.
We're happy to take questions from the board.
Any questions from the board? We will take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next four cases, one eighty-three twenty-three S, one eighty-four twenty-three Z, one eighty-five twenty-three Z, one eighty-six twenty-three Z. Seventeen hundred two oh four South Wabash.
Who's this gentleman? Oh, excellent. Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, I'm going to read the department's recommendation for calendar number one eighty-three dash twenty-three dash S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposal to establish a residential use below the second floor for a proposed nine-story, thirty-seven-unit residential building with four parking spaces, provided the development is consistent with the design and layout of the project data and FAR diagrams, tip, typical floor plans, third through fifth and sixth through eighth, ninth floor and roof plans, north elevation, south elevation, east-west elevations, and building sections dated October eleven, twenty twenty-two, and site plan, landscape plan, first floor, landscape details, first and second floor plans dated June thirteen, twenty twenty-three, all prepared by Papa George Hames Partners. Would everyone planning to testify? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This matter has, there's a lot of asks here. I'm happy to do a brief sort of overview of those, if that would be helpful, but I don't want to take too long. It might take a little bit more than a minute, if that's okay.
Yeah, you can briefly.
Sure. So the applicant here is, I'm here with Martin Owens, who is the authorized representative of the applicant, seventeen hundred South Wabash Chicago Landco LLC, as well as the project architect Luke Marchewski from Papa George Hames Architects, and Peter Poulos, who was an MAI appraiser with BBG Real Estate Services, was testified before this board many a time. We also have a representative from the alderman's office seated next to Luke.
Are you in support of this matter? On the record, he nodded yes.
Excellent. So the applicant here is, it's an affiliated entity of CMK Development, which has been instrumental in the development of this neighborhood, and in particular, will be instrumental in the continued development of the block that we are proposing this project on here today. And the block is a unique block. It consists of a large amount of vacant and underdeveloped lots, and the particular lot itself is unique, and that is narrow. It's only forty-eight feet wide. But more importantly, it has no alley access, as it abuts the CTA L tracks and right-of-way, and it also is adjacent to a CTA substation. So the project here is, with that context in mind, we wanted to present the variations requested here. So the reduction of the rear yard setback is from thirty feet to fifteen feet. This is not going to be impactful, obviously, to the CTA right-of-way behind us. But of course, if testimony is necessary to that effect, we'd be happy to provide it. Alternative compliance with the open space requirements are proposed here. However, we are providing twenty-seven percent more open space than what would otherwise be required. And the next variation is to reduce parking from four spaces, excuse me, from thirty-seven spaces. There's thirty-seven units in the building. This is a transit-serve location, so technically fifty percent of the requirement here would be nineteen parking spaces. So from nineteen to four. And then the last variation is to permit a driveway on Wabash Avenue, and that is to accommodate the condition that there is no alley access. Finally, there's a special use proposed here to eliminate the commercial uses on the ground floor. And the purpose behind that really is because the entirety of the block is intended to be developed, and those buildings will include significant commercial space. So we just didn't want to propose a glut of commercial space on this block here. The alderman, excuse me, the applicant has had several meetings with the alderman, Alderman Dowell, who has expressed no objection on the project. Obviously, there is somebody here to speak in support. And we have also had a meeting with the near-south planning board, which has likewise not expressed an objection. In fact, they have provided a support letter, which we received this morning. So I have copies of that here. One final note I would like to make is these variations, although there are several of them, individually would otherwise be permitted as administrative adjustments otherwise. However, because of the volume where you have to come before the board and present them as variations, so I'm happy to put on the short form of the witness statements.
Yes, please do.
Okay, absolutely. Mr. Owens, please state your name and address for the record.
Martin Owens, seven thirty-nine South Clark, Chicago, the development project manager for the property owner.
Thank you. And we submitted a robust, a long affidavit on your behalf, together with the findings of fact that we submitted to this board. If you were to continue testifying today, would your testimony be consistent with the information provided in that?
Yes.
Thank you. And then I'll move on to Mr. Marchewski. Luke, please provide your name and address for the record.
Luke Marchewski, project architect with Papa George Hames, six forty North Los Al.
Thank you. And we also submitted an affidavit together with the findings of fact that we provided to this board on your behalf. If you were to continue testifying this morning, would your testimony be consistent with that affidavit?
Yes.
Wonderful. And I'll move on to Peter Poulos. Oh, Peter, I don't know how you're gonna be heard here. Yeah, just shout. Sure. You are an MAI appraiser, is that correct? And you have appeared before this board. Oh, thank you. Thank you, Victor. You've appeared before this board on several occasions.
Yes, that's correct.
Mr. Chairman, we'd appreciate if you could recognize Mr. Poulos's expertise.
The board recognizes his expertise.
Thank you. If we all, you submitted a report in connection with this application. Is that correct?
That's correct.
If you were to continue testifying this morning, would your testimony be consistent with the information provided in your report?
Yes, it would.
Wonderful. That concludes our witness presentation.
And we do have someone from Alderman Dowell's office. Sir, if you could, please state your name and your role.
Ryan Friedman, third world Alderman, Pat Dowell's office. Keeping with your request for brevity, Alderman Dowell does support this project, so please, we'd appreciate the board's support as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're happy to take questions from the board.
Any questions from the board?
I do have, I do have a quick one. And I know you just got this letter, so you may not have an answer yet. So I, I appreciate that, and I'll acknowledge that in first. But the near-south planning board had three requests for that. Are you guys amenable to those?
Yes, we are.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, we will take these matters under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Next case, one morning. One ninety-one twenty-three D, eleven thirty-four West Schubert.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My architect chair, my client, was supposed to be here. I told him not until ten-thirty, probably. And we're checking in the hallway to see if he's out there, but.
It's a new day at the zoning board. We're moving faster than usual.
I was thirty cases in. I figured I'd be like, seven thirty, twelve. He should be here any moment. He's pretty punctual. Can we just start with the architect first and?
What are you saying they should be reading? Okay. Which number was that?
Didn't respond either.
No.
One sixty-four. Okay. Yeah, yeah. So what we're gonna, what we're gonna do right now is we're just gonna recall a case, and then, and then we'll call your.
That's, thank you. Thank you.
So recalling one sixty-four dash twenty-three dash Z, seventy-eight twenty-eight South Colfax.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the accommodation. You'll remember that I appeared with Mr. Jesse Sykes on this case, and the alderman's representative had shown up and read a letter from the alderman that had conditions. The condition was that my client sign a letter that he would, that the premises would be owner-occupied. And so I sent my associate back with the client, and we now have that letter. I'd like to enter it into the record, please.
Okay, it will be entered.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
I think we'll just take a recess for a second since we're ready for the last one. Okay.
He wasn't like a dramatic dance.
All right. We are waiting for the applicant for the last calendar number for the morning session. So I move that we take a recess until ten forty. Commissioner Toya seconds. Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes. We'll be in recess until ten forty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Two, yeah. Yeah. I'm telling you, man, this is, this is, this is the plan. Well, that could also be it. But I think, you know, it's, it's a, but it's a, but, but it's a, that's how I wanted this. When we don't have an objection, just move it along. You know? Yeah.
Although it took her thirty, thirty seconds.
Yeah. Yes, there is.
You're moving so fast. I like the form. I was like.
Yeah, I really, I really like this one.
Chairman, just let me know. He just walked.
Oh, he just walked in. Okay. At ten forty, we'll.
Okay. Well, you couldn't.
Thank you.
I turned my camera off. I watched Sam for my cue, and he turned his off. It's like, good, I can turn mine off. That's why I'm a lot, I'm not doing anything different, but at least it looks like I'm looking at it. If we're gonna have like a three-hour break, we could have a real one. Add it more. I don't think we would have known that Brian could get through this eleven.
And they even said it on, so then, and so and there you are.
Proving your point. We don't have, do we have dispensary today? I forgot to look. Yeah. Yeah. I'm mad now because my line system's in town, and that's like, I can't make any plans, but I don't know if I'm gonna leave. And I think we're gonna get out of here at a decent rate. I'll be here next month, so make sure that's the line. Had a ten-hour layover in LA going to see my family, which was perfect. Coming back, I didn't like thirty hours travel. Stay a little bit longer because the first three days are washed. Nothing anybody said was like, no, it doesn't work. This doesn't work. Didn't try that. I had melatonin. I was like, stay up when I get there. I was like, I went two days before the conference, because I went for the Australian Planning Conference. Our CEO was going the day before then, it's like.
There's my question.
Right.
And we were a little, I'd had a few beers, but it was a great fun.
All right. I move that we reconvene this meeting of the zoning board of appeals. Commissioner Toya seconds. Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, and we're back. Calling case number one ninety-one dash twenty-three dash Z. Would all those planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. Counselor, please proceed.
Yes. Morning, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I want to thank the board for giving us that slight delay to get all here. And you are incredibly efficient as opposed to previous times when we've been here for all day.
We were, we were rolling like lightning.
You were. You were really moving fast. Plus, there's a lot of consolidated cases that I didn't anticipate. So, Mr. Chairman, my name is Lawrence Lust. I'm an attorney with offices at ten thirty West Chicago Avenue, and I represent the applicant Gary Fentick, the current owner of eleven thirty-four West Schubert Avenue. Mr. Fentick purchased the adjacent single-family home at eleven thirty-eight West Schubert in two thousand and one, demolished the existing home the following year. And the reason we're here is because he would like to, add an addition to his existing home on that adjacent lot. And so he's seeking a variation to reduce the minimum required rear yard setback from twenty-three-point-seven-eight feet to four-point-three-three feet in order to allow the construction of a new one-story single addition with an attached one-car garage and an existing two-story with basement, single-family residents. I have here today Mr. Gary Fentick and his architect, James Harriman. Let's start, just ask a few questions, Mr. Fentick, if you want mine? Mr. Fentick, you purchased the existing home at eleven thirty-four West Schubert in nineteen eighty-eight, is that correct?
That's correct.
And when you purchased this property, the property lines and the building setbacks were already established on that existing home, correct?
That is correct.
And the, the actual lot is also a regular lot in that it was established more than a hundred years ago, and it's more of a triangle as opposed to a square. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So you didn't create the non-conforming rear setback or the irregular lot shape, correct?
No, sir, I did not.
And you've lived in this property for almost forty years now, and in order to remain in the home, you want to expand the home to install a workout facility, some additional multipurpose space, along with the one indoor parking space. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And the purpose of this addition is not to desire to make more money. It is, in fact, just to expand your existing home. And if you, in fact, built on the single fam, another single-family home in that lot in this very desirable neighborhood, you'd probably make more money.
I was approached by several potential developers, but you're correct.
All right. Okay, that's all I have. You submitted affidavit, and if you continue to testify, your testimony would be consistent with your affidavit?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Next, just ask a couple of questions, Mr. Harriman. Mr. Harriman, you were hired to draft the plans for this addition, is that correct?
That's right.
And during the initial drafting, you reviewed the zoning code, and you found that compliance with the existing zoning code would create practical hardships or difficulties in that you'd have to move the structure all the way forward. It wouldn't be consistent with the the layout of the house that exists now, correct?
That's right.
And that's because this existing house is pushed all the way back to the lot, and it has, in fact, a similar setback that this setback that we're asking for here today, correct?
Yes, our, our new addition is no closer to the alley property line than the house is.
Okay. And by doing this, we're also saving front yard space, which is more attractive for the surrounding neighborhood, correct?
That's right.
And you've prepared an affidavit in this matter, and if you continue to testify, you would, your affidavit goes through the criteria for the granting of this variance, and your testimony here today would be consistent with that affidavit?
Yes, it would.
Mr. Chairman, we have no more testimony. Just, if there's any questions?
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
This is Commissioner Esposito. I just wonder what kind of communication and notice took place between the applicant and neighboring property owners.
We sent the appropriate notices out to all the neighbors. We haven't had any communication from anybody responding to this. We did notify the, the alderman, and she said we didn't need to have a meeting, so.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, we will take this matter under advisement. Thank you. Okay. Okay, I move that we convene into closed session pursuant to section two C four of the Open Meetings Act for the purpose of considering the evidence and testimony presented in open session. Commissioner Toya seconds. Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes. We're in closed session.
You.
I move that we return to open session. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, and we're back. We will now vote. Note that any motion to approve a special use will be tied to the recommendations of the department and any additional conditions read by me. I move to approve all continuance requests to the date stated by me. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the continuances are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number one sixty-seven dash twenty-two dash S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number one sixty-two dash twenty-three dash Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number one sixty-three dash twenty-three dash S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number one sixty-four dash twenty-three dash C. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number one sixty-five dash twenty-three dash S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number one sixty-six dash twenty-three dash C. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number one sixty-seven dash twenty-three dash S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
No.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number one sixty-eight dash twenty-three dash Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number one sixty-nine dash twenty-three dash S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number one seventy dash twenty-three dash Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number one seventy-one dash twenty-three dash C. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number one seventy-two dash twenty-three dash C. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number one seventy-three dash twenty-three dash Z and one seventy-four dash twenty-three dash Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar numbers one seventy-five dash twenty-three dash C, one seventy-six dash twenty-three dash C, and one seventy-seven dash twenty-three dash Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar numbers one seventy-eight dash twenty-three dash C and one seventy-nine dash twenty-three dash Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number one eighty-one dash twenty-three dash Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number one eighty-two dash twenty-three dash Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar numbers one eighty-three dash twenty-three dash S, one eighty-four dash twenty-three dash Z, one eighty-five dash twenty-three dash Z, one eighty-six dash twenty-three dash Z, and one eighty-seven dash twenty-three dash Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number one eighty-eight dash twenty-three dash S, one eighty-nine dash twenty-three dash Z, and one ninety dash twenty-three dash Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number one ninety-one dash twenty-three dash Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move that we recess until two P M. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, we are in recess until two P M.